Now I'll call the meeting to order, the Clarksville Montgomery County Board of Education. We'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice are law.
Before we get into the agenda, we're going to rearrange it just a little bit. The first item, Director of Schools Contract Extension will be moved to right below public conversation before the approval of consent agenda. If you'd make notes of that. So the first item on our agenda will be Point of Pride Award, Dr. Vedder.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Anthony Johnson to announce those for this evening.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, I'm excited to present Points of Pride to three outstanding individuals in CMCSS. Tonight Jessica's not here with me, so I'm going to be handing out certificates and taking the photos, so bear with me, have patience with me. First, if I could please have Coach Doug Badon and representatives from Clarksville High School to please come forward. Each year, TSSAA selects top coaches from across the state who develop character and teach strategies for skill development and strategic thinking. There are approximately 6,000 coaches in TSSAA with over 100,000 student athletes. Tonight, we are excited to present this Point of Pride to Coach Badon from Clarksville High, who is selected as the 2023-2024 TSSAA Girls Wrestling Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Badon, and thank you for everything you do for the Lady Wildcats. All right, next, if I could please have Cade Dieterding and representatives from Ross Hue High School to please come forward. So Board, you might recall seeing Cade at a meeting last semester where he earned a Point of Pride for being one of the only 0.3% of students across the nation to earn a perfect ACT score of 36. Tonight, he's back, and we celebrate Cade for being named a 2025 National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. This year, over 1.3 million juniors entered the program, and Cade was one of only about 1% of students selected as a semifinalist. We are all cheering you on, Cade, and look forward to your finalist announcement in the coming months. All right, and for our last Point of Pride, if Leyland Mercado, is she here? I didn't see. And that's okay, we'll send her certificate. I still want to read this honor. Leyland Mercado, from West Creek High School, this month, we were excited to learn that Leyland was selected for the Tennessee Titans representative for the NFL's Latino Excellence in Youth Football Award. She is a senior at West Creek High who plays forward for the girls soccer team and linebacker, defensive back for the flag football team. Leyland is one of only 32 female student athletes in the entire country to be chosen for this award for making an impact on the playing field and in the classroom by achieving a high level of academic success. Congratulations Leyland on this outstanding achievement, and she got a chance to be honored at a Titans game recently. And that concludes.
Thank you. Next item is public conversation. We have three that have signed up to address the Board. First one is Robert Brenner. Mr. Brenner? Oh, okay. Mr. Brenner, as you're approaching, you have to turn on the microphone, it's a silver button to the right, and a timer will display. We'll give you a lot of time. When it begins to flash, you have one minute left.
Yes, everyone talks about more schools, but there's a daily problem, computers. There's a system in place to notify parents all at once. Give them a list of the schools with the member that represents them, along with the email address for that school board member. Ask these key questions. Does your student have a school-provided computer? If you have ever had to turn one in for repair, were you given a replacement at that time, and how long was it a turnaround time for? Do a check of custody of the computer when you turn it in? And the biggest thing is, if you look into it, you will know that probably the first month of school, there are students that do not have computers. So without computers, they are unable to do their education properly, and I believe that's what we're all here for, is make sure to get proper education. Second thing, everybody talks about active shooter events. What about disruptions in the hallway? Namely, the physical altercations in bowling, both of which are supposed to have zero tolerance. At a minimum, even number of rooms do even number hours. Same for the odd numbers on odd hours, that's the teacher in that room do that hour. Be out in the hallway and actually monitor. The person nearest to the steps or other hallways should be watching that area only. What about blind spots? Others should adjust to cover. They're supposed to be protecting the students, only allowed to have phones to request additional help to control any situation, school staff, SRO, police, fire, medical, that's the teachers. Only use it if you need it, not playing on it. If students are walking on the right side and not allowed to stand still, the risk of incidents is less likely to happen. If the students don't do what they're supposed to be doing, do it the old-fashioned way, detention the first time, weekend suspension the second time, third time, out of school suspension fourth grade. As we all know, there is too much physical confrontation in our schools. Don't want to talk about it, but we know it's there, and something needs to be done. So I hope you guys take these recommendations and run with it, because the schools are zoos, and if you say they aren't, you're fooling yourself.
Thank you for comments. Patrick Kerr. Patrick Kerr. Okay. Allison Quarter. Ms. Quarter, as you're approaching, at the left, there will be a, at the right of that microphone, there'll be a silver button you'll need to press that will turn it on, and that timer will begin. It lasts for five minutes, it will start to flash, that means you have one minute left.
Hi, everyone, my name is Ally Quarter, and I am the American Heart Association representative for Clarksville Montgomery County Schools. I shared with y'all a document via email just about the amazing work that your schools are doing with the American Heart Association, so I wanted to share a little bit about that. And then I also brought a special guest, Carly, with me. But the American Heart Association partners with numerous Clarksville Montgomery County Schools for our Kids and American Heart Challenge programs. These programs are service learning opportunities where students and their families learn about heart health and life-saving skills like hands-only CPR and warning signs of a stroke. So right now, we know unfortunately only 10, one in 10 people will survive an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. That is a very small number. And we know of out-of-hospital cardiac arrests, 75% of those happen in your home. That's a very high number. So our goal is to help your students and their families know what to do if that happens in their home through our Kids and American Heart Challenge programs. So some exciting statistics from your schools that participated last school year, we had 13 schools in your county actively participate in our programs. Of that, we had 12,000 students and families receive heart-healthy information, 1,500 students took a heart-healthy challenge and pledge, and of that, 320 students and families learned hands-only CPR and warning signs of a stroke. And then also, a big part of our program is recognizing our local heart survivors. So that is where I brought Carly with me, and Carly, it's very exciting, she actually is recognized as one of our National Youth Heart ambassadors. This is an application process, and she was chosen. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Carly and her story. So Carly is currently a third grader, and she attends Liberty Elementary School. At four months old, Carly was diagnosed with a rare congenital heart defect known as double-inlet left ventricle. She's had three open-heart surgeries. She loves to run, play, dance, and fish. Her whole family had to learn very quickly the signs of cardiac distress due to her condition, and they feel so passionate that other schools in their community are prioritizing their students and families learning this life-saving skill. Carly's family is so proud of her positivity and infectious smile, she truly is a heart hero. I would love to give Carly a round of applause, if y'all would like. But we are so proud of her and excited to recognize her not only on a local scale, but also at national level. So there are some news articles and things that I will share with you all this year. And then I'm a visual person, I don't know about y'all, but I thought you may want to know what schools in your region participate in our program. Our hope is to engage all of your schools, so everyone can feel confident in learning this life-saving skill of hands-only CPR. So I did bring a paper that kind of breaks them up by district. Would it be helpful if I pass those out or set them? Okay, perfect. But thank y'all for your support, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. I didn't see anybody walk in, but I'll make final call for Patrick Kerr. Okay, then we'll move on with our agenda. The first item will be Director of Schools Renewal Contract. I have a motion to approve the contract renewal. Have a motion for Mr. Garland, the second, Ms. Berry, to approve the Director's contract, which is a 12-month extension to an existing contract. Any discussion? Discussion is now closed, please open the vote. Are all people, everyone satisfied with their vote? Please close the vote. Passes 6-0. Next item is approval of consent agenda. Have a motion by Mr. Mayberry, and the second, by Mr. Renear. Had to struggle with that, Chris, I'm not used to calling you mister. All in favor? Excuse me. Please open the vote. Are all members satisfied with their vote? Please close the vote. Consent agenda passes 6-0. Next item, policy monitoring. Dr. Vedder.
Board, please find in your board packet information on Executive Limitation 11: Capital Projects. This executive limitation has eight compliance expectations that our staff follow to ensure district facilities are safe and adequate in order to accomplish the Board's policies and priorities. Specifically, projects are prioritized based on a needs analysis. The Board reviews, adjusts, and approves the list of capital projects prior to allocation of funds. Decisions are based on economic sufficiency, longevity, and individual needs of each facility. All land purchases are recommended by the County Commission, School Board, Planning Commission, CMCSS Operations Department, and Joint Land Acquisition Committee. A proposed construction schedule based on careful analysis of district building capacity, student enrollment projections, and Planning Commission growth data has been developed for the next 20 years. The joint committees review total costs, timelines, and quarterly construction reports. Likewise, leadership teams from school sites monitor ongoing construction projects, and updates are provided to the Board and made available to the public. Projects are prioritized appropriately based on student and staff safety, educational needs, environmental impact, and aesthetics. Projects exceeding $25,000 go to public bid. The lowest and best bids are accepted based on contractor performance, quality, and work history. Any new school construction or major renovations estimated at greater than $2 million will be brought to the Board for final approval of staff recommendations for an architect. Chairman Griffey, this concludes Executive Limitation 11: Capital Projects.
Thank you, Dr. Vedder. Is there a motion to accept this reported executive limitation? Have a motion of Ms. Berry. Have a second, Mr. Garland. Any discussion? Discussion is now closed, please open the vote. Is everyone satisfied with your vote? Please close the vote. Motion passes 6-0. Next item, for Board discussion is election of Board Officers. Turn this over to Mr. Nolan to handle this portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Board. Tonight, we will elect a new Chair and Vice Chair. Pursuant to the procedure outlined in the Board's policy of GP 11, we'll take nominations for the Chair first. Nomination does not require a second, so do we have any nominations for the Chair? Mr. Mayberry? Mr. King Griffey? All right, do we have any additional nominations for Chair?
I nominate co-chair Jimmy Garland.
All right, do we have any additional nominations besides Mr. Griffey and Mr. Garland? All right. We have two nominations, two names for you to commit. So I've been told we're going to do this by just a hand vote. So we will vote, and first, we will ask for votes for Mr. Griffey and then Mr. Garland. All right, so all those voting for Mr. Griffey to remain the Chair, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So we have four. And for Mr. Garland? We have two.
Vote for Mr. Garland, was that for the co-chair, or was that actually for the Chair position?
For the Chair.
Okay.
Is that, do we have a misunderstanding? Do we need to vote? There's two nominations for the Chair, and you are voting for one of those nominations.
Yeah, there was a misunderstanding on my behalf.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions about that? All right, we will vote again by a show of hands for Mr. Griffey. That's three, and for Mr. Garland? That is three. We have six members pursuant to the rule. We will vote again. Does anybody have any comments they want to make before we vote again?
I don't know if this is in order, but Mr. Griffey has served as our Chair for the last two years, and I think change is good. And so that is my rationale for considering the co-chair, which is Mr. Garland. And that's my take on it.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we'll call for our second vote. All those in favor of Mr. Griffey, please raise your hand. And for Mr. Garland? It's three and three again. All right, according to GP 11, we vote a third time. If there's no change in the third-time election, then the floor will be reopened for nominations. Does anybody like to say anything before we have a third vote? All right, by a show of hands, all those in favor as Mr. Griffey is the Chair, please raise your hand. Three, and Mr. Garland? Three. All right, we have a tie, it has not been broken. Pursuant to GP 11, if there is no election possible, we are to now reopen the floor for nominations. So we are starting over. I will reopen the floor for nominations. Anybody want to make a nomination for Chair? Mr. Mayberry?
I nominate Mr. King Griffey.
All right, any additional nominations?
I nominate Mr. Jimmy Garland, co-chair.
Any additional nominations? All right. Call for a vote. You may vote for Mr. Griffey or Mr. Garland. All those in favor of Mr. Griffey, please raise your hand. Three, Mr. Garland? Three. Okay, we are tied in a deadlock, and there's only six of you, and so unless someone is going to change their mind... There is no guidance as to how to do this, but if it is a stalemate, I would suggest to the Board that you pass this until we have a seventh member, which would be hopefully next formal meeting in October. Now, I can't make that decision, y'all would need to vote for that, so if somebody has a motion to pass this because we are currently in a deadlock, that would be the motion to make at this time. All right, Mr. Renear's made a motion to pass this until October, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Berry has seconded it, is there any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor of them passing this until the October meeting, please raise your hand. All right, that motion passes 6-0, this will be re-on the agenda for October. The current Chair and Vice Chair will remain in their position until October.
So just, just to bring clarity, is that the formal meeting or the study session?
It will be at the formal meeting, because there's no votes that happen in the study session. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Next item is CMCSS Depository Authorization. Dr. Vedder?
And I would guess we actually have to move this to October meeting as well. This is updating the payroll signatures with the Chair's signature, so I would ask for this to be added to October agenda.
Okay. So it'll be moved to the October agenda as well. Next item, is comments before Kamala School is on, officer, I'm sorry? Mr. Mayberry, I did not...
That's all right. Does that mean, I know there are some positions that were in limbo for that vote, does that mean that they cannot get, go into hiring until then?
No, this was actually just the, there's dual signatures on all paychecks and payroll, and it has the Chair and the Director of Schools, and this was just to update it in case the Chair changed. So, yes, yes.
The current authorization would carry over until the Board votes for additional Chair and Vice Chair.
No comments before Kamala School is on, officer? Thank you. CMCA President, or Representative, I'm sorry?
We commonly associate September with Labor Day, football weekends, and the beginning of autumn. While those things are great, tonight, the Clarksville Montgomery County Education Association wants to highlight two other reasons to celebrate during the month of September. Grandparents' Day, which is near and dear to my heart because I have the best grandkid ever, and National Family Day. Family engagement in schools contributes to positive student outcomes, including improved child and student achievement, decreased disciplinary issues, improved parent/teacher and teacher-student relationships, and improved school environment. When families are involved, everyone feels more united in a common purpose, because family involvement creates an atmosphere for dialogue and growth. The power of partnership between families and their public schools cannot be overstated. Tonight, CMCA also wants to welcome our newly-elected School Board members, and Chris is the only one here, so welcome, Chris. Just as we are committed to strengthening the partnership between families and our public schools, CMCA is committed to unlocking the power of partnership with our School Board. We know our families love their public schools, and we are committed to protecting our public schools and ensuring that Clarksville Montgomery County is the best place in which to live, teach, and learn. Please know that our members are ready to be a resource for you as you advocate for the resources, policies, and practices that our students deserve. Thank you.
Comments, PET representative?
Good evening, School Board members, and newly-elected School Board Member Chris Lenear and Dr. Luna Vedder. Tonight's going to be really short, and as you can see, I'm still celebrating Constitution Week, the way I'm dressed today. Last week, Professional Educators of Tennessee, we supported the 917 Society by celebrating Constitution Week by delivering pocket constitutions to eighth graders across the United States. This year, we have delivered over 1 million constitutions to students across the nation. Our goal for next year, 2025, is 2 million. After culminating event last Tuesday, September 17th, the official signing of the Constitution, we received requests for 8,000 more constitutions. So our goal next year also is to filter those pocket constitutions into our territories also. That way, we can say we have 50 states covered and our territories. So each year, I'm happy to say, as the Education Advisory Chair for 917, that we've surpassed every goal that we've set to deliver those constitutions. We want to keep that Constitution alive. Last week, we did some reenactments at our school. We did the Midnight Ride of Sybil Luddington. A lot of people don't know Paul Revere, wasn't the only one who was in on the action. And also, we read the poem, "The Midnight Ride of Paul Revere." And as a funny side note, today, we were taking our social studies tests in fourth grade, and I was doing the read aloud to our fourth graders. And there was actually a question on there about the midnight ride of, and all of them looked at me, and I was looking at the ceiling, so they wouldn't catch the expression on my face, so all of them got that question right. So I encourage you to support 917 Society. It's 917society.org, it's a nonprofit organization. Check us out, we'd love to have you as part of our group. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments by County Commissioners? Comments by Board Members?
Mr. Mayberry? I just want to say thankful for Allison Quarter from the American Heart Association for coming, and little Carly there, she was adorable, I appreciate them being here today. I want to say my heart goes out to Casey Bryant and her father, who has passed this last weekend, and that's why she is not here tonight. So just wanted to say my thoughts and prayers are with her, and also want to give an echo of congratulations to Coach Badon, who was my daughter's wrestling coach. Thank you.
I see your mic flashing, but it's not lit up over here that you asked to speak. Sure you can. It's comments by Board Members.
You know, I always like to have words of encouragement, and believe it or not, that we are constantly seeing our children do things that are great for this community. And they can only do this simply because we have someone... And they can only do this simply because we have some, some great teachers, we have some great parents, we have some great leaders in this community. And I like to thank the Public Schools Strong Group for being here today because we are public schools strong. No matter how long I sit here, I will always be for public schools because that's how I came up, that's how my kids came up. And I really do believe that as citizens of this great nation, the people that comes after their kids graduate, those people that are still around, we have a responsibility to make sure that our schools stay strong, stay vibrant, and stay focused. And I say to the teachers and to the leadership under Dr. Luna, to continue to do what you're doing, because we're proud of you, and we know that we're only going to go forward, we're not going to go back, we are going forward. Thank you.
Ms. Berry?
I too want to comment on the Public Schools Strong Group that's here, because it takes all of us working together to have strong public schools. And when I'm no longer in support of public schools and doing the best I can to make sure that they're strong, I personally will resign or not run for reelection, because the purpose of this board is to do what's best for public schools in this community, so that all children have an equal right to a fair and public education. And anyone that doesn't like what I say, it's okay, I pray for you. But when we, as public school servants, turn against what we truly should be supporting, there's something wrong with that. Check yourself, heart and mind, and your very soul. And I'm not apologizing to anyone. But I do think that we have two terms, I think it's for president, two for governor, and two for most of our elected officials. And I don't think that school board should be an exception. I think that Mr. Griffey has done a wonderful job as our chair. But I do think that change is good and experience is good, and everyone deserves an opportunity to have a fair chance to do what's right for public schools. And it's all in love that I do what I do, because I am retired, retired, and, but because I believe in public schools and what it has been for me and my family. And I tell you, it doesn't matter what side you're on, if you are a Republican, Democrat, or independent, but it does matter what you do for public schools, and I will continue to fight for what's right, even if I have to fight by myself. I may stand five-two, but I tell you, I'm a praying woman, and God does move. Amen. Thank you.
I don't see more green lights. Comments, Director of Schools, report?
Good evening, board members. Yesterday, we received an exciting announcement from the U.S. Department of Education. I'm going to ask the technology team to play a short video now.
Hi, I'm U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona, and I want to say a big congratulations to each and every one of our 2024 National Blue Ribbon Schools. Achieving this honor means that your schools are raising the bar, thanks to your amazing educators and students. It means that your school is the pride of your community and the model for schools across the nation. For more than forty years, our National Blue Ribbon Schools have shown us what it means to raise the bar for our nation's students. You show us what happens when we focus on the instructional core, ensuring every student in America receives an excellent education that lets them achieve their dreams. You show us what happens when we listen to the educators in schools and classrooms every day, who know their students and their communities best. And you show us what happens when we lift up best practices and instruction, when we empower students to uncover their unique superpowers and share them with the world. No matter what it is, you allow students to realize their full potential. As we celebrate your achievement, I also want to recognize that our journey to raise the bar for our schools and students, it never ends. We know that educators hold the key to shaping the future. As a National Blue Ribbon School and educators, your journey has valuable lessons to teach other schools and districts and states across the nation. So let's normalize what you've achieved, and let's make sure that examples of excellence that you've pioneered in your schools inspire systems of success across our nation. Let's inspire other schools and educators with the power of your example. Let's share our strategies for raising the bar for educational opportunity, professional development, giving teachers the support they need. On behalf of the United States Department of Education, President Biden, Vice President Harris, and our entire administration, I want to congratulate you and say thank you for all you've done to raise the bar for education. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce the 2024 National Blue Ribbon Schools.
So what exactly does it mean to be recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School? For context, out of approximately seventeen hundred public schools in the state of Tennessee, this year, only six schools received the honor. Four elementaries, one K-12, and one high school. Nationally, three hundred fifty-six schools out of approximately ninety thousand public schools were recognized. For the mathematicians in the room, that's approximately four thousandths of one percent of schools statewide, as well as the same percentage nationally. Also, we are only one of three districts in the entire state, CMCSS, Williamson County, and Oak Ridge, to have earned back-to-back National Blue Ribbon Awards in 2023 and 2024, with Middle College earning this distinction last year. Spanish Immersion Elementary and Middle College at Austin P were the first schools to receive this award in the history of Clarksville Montgomery County schools. These schools are achieving academically at high levels, but even more importantly, they are closing achievement gaps of subgroups to ensure that all students are reaching their potential. This award belongs to the students putting in the hard work, the dedicated teachers for working tirelessly, all current and former administrators who made this vision a reality. This is not just a school system award, this is truly a community award. Mr. Griffey, this concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vetter. And that concludes our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.